I am running for Lake Travis ISD trustee place five because for the same reason I ran nine years ago. I believe that academic excellence is very, very important and I believe that Lake Travis does that well. We have many amazing students that have succeeded and what we need to do is continue to prepare our students of tomorrow so that they can be the leaders for us. I also, being an accountant, I believe that we need to be fiscally responsible with the dollars that we spend. We just had a board meeting a couple of weeks ago when we talked about budgeting forecasting and 36.2 cents of every dollar leaves our district and I have 10 seconds. So, fiscally responsible and I also believe that we are very, very important that we need to retain our staff. So, thank you. That's the end.
Alright, hey y'all, I'm Erin Archer. I am running for place three. First, I want to thank the chamber for hosting us. Thank you, Ward, thank you, Kristi, thank you, Paul for moderating. I am running because I have four kids in this district currently. I have one at the elementary school, one at the middle school, two at the high school. So, I pretty much can relate to any parent who currently has a child in this district. I'm also a small business owner in this area and have been with my husband for over 16 years. So, when I say we are invested, I mean it personally, both economically because our livelihoods are here and the school district being successful is very important to us, but also obviously for our children. Something else about me is that I have no other political ambitions or agendas. This is it. I'm doing this because I have a heart for this district. I don't plan on running for anything else after this. So, I just want y'all to know that every decision I make would solely be based on what is best for our kids and best for our district. Few issues that are important to me. Closing the learning loss gaps due to COVID, very important. Safe, open schools, part of those learning losses because our kids weren't in school. Our kids need to be in school. Parent choice for masks and COVID vaccinations. Lowering the political temperature around our classrooms in our district. Y'all, we gotta get back just to the academics. We need to stop the fussing and the fighting around our kids. They need to be focused on school, removing those politics from the classroom. And most of these issues, I just want to say, are statewide and nationwide issues. Does that mean I'm naive and don't think that we can't tackle those things here? We're Lake Travis. We are able to be leaders. We can be on the forefront of tackling these issues. I'd appreciate your votes.
Hi, I'm Kit Crumley. I'm running for place four on the LTIS board. I wanted to say thank you for everyone for coming here. Thank you to everyone joining me today as here. This is great to see. It's great to see how occasioned everyone is interested in the election. I'm a nearly 20-year public servant. I was a trial attorney with the Department of Justice for almost 10 years. Currently, an administrative judge with the federal government. And, you know, I have to say that, you know, public service is a calling. I think the elected officials up here would agree with me about this. It's not always a fun job, but you do it because you feel called to it. And you feel called to step up when you see things that, when there's a need. And I feel like we have a need right now in LTIS. So, much like we've heard from other folks here, we moved to the district because of the schools. My wife Alexis and I, one of our two daughters, who are now into high school and BK middle school. And, you know, I've heard a lot of other folks in the district tell me the same thing. And they also tell me that those things that brought them to the district, they're starting to see maybe they're heading in the wrong direction. So, when I hear that from people and when I see that myself, I start to think, well, maybe there's a time that there's a need for me as well. So, you asked about the three issues. Overcrowding under staff are two big ones. And those are the ones that I feel like are real big drivers and why we're seeing this excessive of our students start to suffer. I really want to get in there and work on those. And I think we have time to talk about that more later. The third issue that is really important to me is communication. I'm a big believer in government transparency. I feel like our district doesn't do all that it can to be transparent with the parents and to engage the parents. When we have, if you ask about strengths of our district, our parents are our strength. And they are passionate and they are engaged. And we don't do everything we can to harness that and bring them in and get them to the table. Because when you put people at the table and get them out behind their keyboards, that's when the temperature starts to come down and when we start to accomplish things. So, I would appreciate your vote. My website's K I T four L T dot com. Thank you very much.
I'm Porter Haring. I'm running for place five. And again, I just echo everybody. Thank you so much for the Travis Chamber of Commerce for doing this and people. I actually think it's really exciting that we actually have choices this year in the school board. That is, we've had a number of school board races where we don't have choices. And I know how engaged everybody is and I think this is a really good thing for our community. So, I moved here with my husband and our two boys back in 2010 to the area. Of course, like everybody else, I think, for the schools. I went to an excellent school district just down the road over in East. And we couldn't afford to live there. So, we moved here for the excellent schools. And so, my boys have been in, we actually started in Lake Way Elementary, but we've been in West Cypress Hills and now they're in middle school. And that's really what has got me into the race is that I, when we moved to West Cypress Hills, a second high school was kind of the top of the town. It was sort of an imminent thing, at least on our side of the district. It was going to come. And then we had the 2018 bond and the land was purchased. And I was like, this is going to be great. It's going to totally work out. My kids are going to go through middle school and the high school is going to open up right around that. And then the conversation went away. And beginning this year, you know, my boys being in middle school, hearing all the stories coming out of the high school and the overcrowding and kids not with no desks sitting on the floor, elbowing their ways through the crowded hallway. I have regular kids. They are going to get lost there. And I did not want, I wanted to do something to start that conversation. And I did restart the conversation, I think, in the community and saw an opportunity to try to drive that forward a little bit more. And I really just want, I know my kids are not the only kids that are just regular kids that want to just have a great high school experience. And that's really what got me in the race here. Thank you. And it's Porter Haring, place five.
Thank you. Hello, I am John Allier. I am running for place five. I am currently school board president. I've been on the school board for almost seven years. Chandler and I moved to this district in 1999. Keaton was just a baby. She just graduated from University of Texas last May and is teaching school in Austin ISD. Jackson is a junior at Auburn. He's a mechanical engineering major. My son Connor is a junior at the high school and Mia is a sophomore in the high school. So, all of our kids, once they graduate, they will be lifers of LTIS. Is this a sign for the ball?
Who's the best dancer?
Not which or. Where the heck was I? My kids are lifers. That's right. My kids are lifers. And so, my two older kids are, they were so prepared to, thanks for the call. They were so prepared to enter their next phase after school. They chose college. They are just, they were so prepared. That's why I love this district and that's why I'm running again. That's why I ran before, because I love this district. And you may hear some negative things tonight, but I'm here to defend this district and to really educate everyone here on really what's going on. Not really what you hear, but I'm going to give you data and I'm going to support that. So, that's why I'm with you. The three big issues, and I'm going to sound like a broken record. Closing the gaps, right? If that's not your number one, your number one issue in any district in Texas, you're missing a boat. Number two, teacher and staff retention. That's getting tougher and tuckling. Kim and I, we just passed, we, the seven of us, passed the most aggressive payroll increase in the history of Lake Travis last month.
Hi, everybody. I'm Laurie Higginbotham. I am currently serving in my second term in Lake Way City Council. I started serving back in 2018 and my term will end in May, so there won't be any overlap. I decided not to run again for city council. I served as mayor for Tim for two of those years. And I'm also an attorney in my day job. I represent veterans, military families, and special needs children. I just had a trial last week in San Antonio for an Air Force family. And I have learned a lot in this community. I've been here for a long time. I've lived in Austin for 30 years, but I've been in Lake Travis for 13 of those years. We moved here for the district like everyone else. And I have had three kids that were LT lifers. One of those is a freshman at UT. I have to say, you're Kim, my number one, because I'm a double lawboard myself. I went to UT undergrad law school and my husband also is a lawboard. I've got a junior at the high school and I have a fifth grader who will be the one who's living with all of these decisions that we're about to be making in the next year. So, I'm very interested in planning because I've been here for a long time. I want to maintain the good things about the district. But what made me run for school board is I think we are facing some of the toughest challenges that we've ever faced before in our history. And some of those challenges are going to be things we have to address in the next three to six months because we are at a critical time right now in making these decisions. We have a lot of strengths. We have fantastic parents. I'm a room mom. I'm on the board of Youngman Service League. I volunteer with parents every day of every week and it's one of the best things about our district. But we have some weaknesses, some of which are our making and some of them are not. But we have to correct those right now. And so, you asked what the priorities of mine would be. My priorities would be addressing staff shortages. We have staffing shortages from top to bottom, from principals to teachers to bus drivers to cafeteria workers. We have overcrowded schools in every level, high school down to elementary school. And we have declining rankings that we need to address and not be afraid to confront. So, those would be my priorities. I look forward to working with anyone in the school board.
So, thank you, everybody. Would anyone like to offer a further comment on anything that was offered?
One minute.
For one minute. One minute. Anybody? You good?
Sure.
John?
So, some of the priorities was overcrowded and Laurie mentioned that. It's from the elementary school to the high school. So, we have three elementary schools that have just 600 kids. We do have one that's approaching 120% of growth, which is, which is when you talk about either moving kids off of that school or building a new school. So, are we overcrowded? No, we have the buildings. It's the boundaries that are just a little bit skewed. Rough Hollow is really, has really, really exploded. So, when you have three schools that have 600 kids, that's not overcrowded. You have one that's approaching 120%. BK Elementary is also approaching 120%. From the demographic study, BK will be at 120% next year. Rough Hollow is there.
Anybody else?
Real quick, while there's a break, we blocked these two doors from the outside. So, if you need to get up, please use the back door.
Okay, I would just like to briefly respond. There's no question the high school is overcrowded. Every demographic study that the district has put out for the last 10 years has said the practical capacity of the high school is 3,500 students. And the demographic study that was just released said we were over 3,600. The real number is over 3,700 if you're able to access that on Skyward. So, there's no question that we have overcrowding issues that need to be addressed. We have kids sitting on the floor in high school cafeterias. We have kids crowding hallways. We have 100 kids trying out for sports where there are 20 spots. So, it's not just about how many bodies you fit in a building. It's about how many kids have opportunities to participate fully in high school. It's about teacher-student ratio that's currently 35 to one, and that's something we need to improve.
Would anyone else like to comment or respond for one minute? So, then we're running the second question there. So, the second question is there will likely be a bond issue that's called to address the overcrowding issues at several schools, particularly elementary campuses and Lake Travis High School. Would you support a second high school in the district? Would you recommend building additional elementary schools? Why or why not? In order to reverse the order at this time, so?
Well, I just talked about that a little bit. I think, you know, my answer is going to be yes. I think we desperately need a second high school. Because overcrowding of high school impacts everything. It impacts how our students are learning. And there's a lot of studies that show students learn better in smaller classes. It impacts how many people can participate in sports and fine arts and every extracurricular activity. And all of us who want our kids to have opportunities in college, applying for college, you need those things on your resume. You need to say, I played sports for four years, or I was the president of a club, or I played in the band, or I played in orchestra, or I had a role in the play. And if we're turning kids away, they're suffering. They're not getting those high school memories. They're not connected to their community. So, it's very important just for their wellbeing. But it's also important for our teachers. They are overworked because we have too many kids that they have to grade papers for. There was a teacher survey of our high school teachers in October 2021 that showed our teachers say they are working an average of three hours on top of their normal school day. That's because of the number of students they have. Some of them are working five to seven hours after school is out. That's another job and they're not getting paid for that. So, if we don't get the numbers under control, they will leave us for a district. And they are leaving us, some of them are leaving us, for a place that's more accommodating and manages their work life stress better. But in addition to that, you know, we need more opportunities for students to learn. And we are getting dinged in the rankings because students are not having the student-teacher ratio that they need. We're getting dinged in the rankings because the participation rate in extracurricular activities is low. It's not low because they don't want to participate. It's low because they can't, because there's too many kids trying out for one or two spots. So, it impacts everything from student wellbeing to teacher retention to rankings and how we're perceived, you know, both by parents and by teachers. So, it's important and something we need to address.
You know, your questions have more than one part, you know? Would I recommend new elementary schools? Absolutely. To finish my thought, when we build one new elementary school, which we're going to in two years, if it's passed in the bond, we won't need one for quite some time. And there's going to be, hopefully, the bond advisory committee's meeting right now. We just had our fourth meeting last night. And hopefully, they're going to bring something to the board that's going to have two elementary schools and some sort of relief to the high school. Whether that's a new high school or something that can alleviate the pressure that's going to be on the high school, or is on the high school now that's going to be, you know, too great. The demographic study by four years ago showed our build-out, meaning when everything is built out in our district beyond 2031, it showed 1,900 more kids in the school district. I'm sorry, in a high school, in a high school. Almost 7,500 kids in the high school. So, back then, it was a no-brainer. That's two high schools. I mean, there's no, you can't have relief for 3,500 kids. You can't. It's got to be in the high school. So, the reason that she, sorry, the reason that someone said that the subject or the conversation was dropped is because the new demographic study came out. Our build-out. Hello? Our build-out is now 5,532. That's almost 2,000 kids less in our high school than what the previous demographic study said. So, when we get to 120% at 4,200 kids, that's when we need the relief. And I'm looking for the bond advisory committee to recommend something to the board and then we're going to study that.
Well, I think you'll guess that I am for a second high school. That's what brought me into this race. So, and I definitely understand where John's coming from. That study back in 2017, I think it was, John, that it was definitely a lot higher than what we're seeing now. I will say though, we've had a lot of attrition in our student population due to COVID. So, it will be interesting. We may have some drastic shifts as well in the next year or two with our demographic studies then that may kind of push us back up to where we were in the 2017 demographic study. So, by making this decision just based upon this one, I feel like we need that second high school waiting till we're at 120% when we already have the overcrowding that we do. Is it not setting up our children for success? And we want the student-teacher ratio lower. We want the physical space is going to help the mental space of our children. They feel connected when they're seen, when they're not surrounded by a ton of people all over the place and they don't know, they're taking 10 minutes to get to a class, they're late to class, they can't get parking, they're late to parking, I mean, late to class because of parking. There's just, there's so much going on in the high school. Now, John mentioned something earlier too about the elementary school. And I was looking at this and I actually, of course, I don't want to put us in a position where we're behind again. I think we need that second high school and I wouldn't want to put us in a position where we're behind the elementary school. But if you look at the current demographic study, we don't actually reach that 120% until after 2030, the 2031 school year for elementaries if we do some rezoning. So, I don't, we're not, yeah, we have rough hollow is overcrowded, but just as John said, we're really below the enrollment rate in a ton of the other schools. So, if we could shift that and use our facilities better, I think that would be better. If we're making a choice between a second high school and elementary schools, I would say second high school. But I would hope we can do both so we don't set ourselves behind again.
Okay, so, while I talk about 120%, I want to make sure everybody's clear of what this means. So, the general thinking is you go to 120% before dividing schools, so you don't have two half-full schools and maybe overheads or anything on that. I can speak up and I can eat the microphone, they always say, right?
The mic is going in and out.
Yeah, alright. This better? Alright, sorry about that. So, anyway, 120% is the typical what you do for a high school or for a school before you divide it because that's, you know, that way you don't have two half-full schools, you do have two 60% full schools. The issue for me is that at 120%, you just heard John say 4,200 students. Right now, we're at 3,600, 3,700 and I can tell you it's overcrowded already. So, we're talking trailers, we're talking already overcrowded cafeterias where children are sitting on the floor. I don't know if we have another cafeteria. It's, it's very difficult. So, I would not like to get to 120% if we can not do that. The problem is that's where we're locked into now because we haven't taken action, right? So, it takes three to four years, that's the current estimate for a build-out of a new high school. So, we're going to be up against that 120 crunch whether we like it or not. So, the question was though about the bond. Here's what I'll tell you about the bond. My personal feeling is we need a full second high school rather than adding on to the existing high school more and making it 5,000 students or doing a ninth-grade center. There are other options. But at the end of the day, it's not about what I want, it's about what y'all want, right? Because this is going to come up for a vote in November on a bond. And y'all need to be able to pass it. Because I think everyone up here would tell you the worst thing that could happen is that it doesn't pass because then we don't have money to do anything. So, the really critical thing is we make sure whatever is put up in November is what the, what the community wants. Okay? So, my concern is we don't quite know what that is. And I'll talk more about the bond committee later, but it's a closed group. I don't have any insight into it other than seeing the slides. And so, I'm not entirely sure if they know what the community wants. And if they don't know what the community wants, then it's very difficult to propose something in the bond that the community wants.
So, we're talking about adding extra campuses. Just to recap in case y'all lost where we were, I'm not going to read the whole question. It would take us like two minutes. Our district has had extraordinary growth, y'all. So, these are growth issues. And yes, if you're asking me the question, should we add extra campuses? Absolutely. Let's add them at the elementary level. Let's add a high school, a second high school, if that's what we can do. The elementary campuses right now, like I said, we could re-shift a little bit, but if we can afford in our bond to add a second one, let's, I mean, another one, let's do that. If we can afford a second full high school, I think we should do that as well. I am really excited to hear the feedback from the bond committee. I don't know what Kit's referring to. I know it's closed, but y'all, there's 70 people in there and the people I know that are in there are reaching out. They are forming Facebook groups. They're getting feedback. That's their job. They are tasked with that. I've heard the format is amazing. It's well-run. These groups are missed. There's high school students in these groups. There's administrators in the groups. It's doing great things and that's how it's always been. There's always been a bond committee before a bond. That's been in the works forever. That's not new information. Once the bond committee comes up with their recommendations and they bring those to the board, if elected and I'm on that board, I would use those recommendations from our community because that's what's important. Plus, y'all, it's great to be like, let's just put a second high school. But, and that's what I want if we can do it. I just want to put that out there. But we also have to look at the data. Is that the most financially sound decision for our district? I hope it is. But we have to be thinking about our taxpayers too. We also have to look at, can we staff it? Is it feasible? And I want that just as much as every other family out here. But I think we can't all just use the easy answer and say, plug in a second high school. I want that if we can, but I just want it to be known that there's a lot of factors that go into that.
Well, I think that everybody knows we're talking about bonds and new campuses. Being on the board for the past nine years, we've built four new campuses since I've been in the district or on the board, excuse me. And so, it's really important to me that we put facilities in place for student population. Porter had a great, a great recommendation regards to rezoning. And though, yes, that is going to be something that's a great opportunity, it also causes challenges. I don't know how many of you sat through the rezoning committee. It's very emotional. And so, we want to make sure that we're not transplanting students for short periods of time, knowing that we're opening up additional campuses. I think it's a great idea, but we want to make sure that we're being mindful of those students that we misplaced for a shorter period of time. I want new, I want new elementary schools. I don't want rough hollow. I don't want the other campuses to be overcrowded the way that they are. COVID brought change to our campuses. We have some campuses that grew a whole lot faster during COVID than what we anticipated. We knew rough hollow was going to build out, but because of COVID, people moved here a lot faster. So, it definitely changed that dynamic and escalated that timeline than what we anticipated and what the demographer, goodness gracious, what the demographer estimated. Talking about the high school, because that is the elephant in the room, we need to address the overcrowding. There's not a single one of us up here that's not talking about that. And though we don't believe that, being on the board for the past nine years, we have been planning for this. Porter said, we bought the land. We're planning and we're presenting for that, but we have to make sure that we need to be fiscally responsible. I'm for a second high school. If we can build it, as Erin said, we've been very fiscally responsible with our dollars. I lost my minute. I lost my minute. We've been very fiscally responsible to be able to have those dollars that we can hopefully call a bond, that we'll be able to fill everything that we need without raising our taxpayer dollars.
So I now invite one minute further comment from anyone up here. Who's asked this question? Kit, I assume.
Can I just ask something real quick? Move to the area? I just thought, with their places, three of you are place five. Does that mean I'm only picking one of you? Or can somebody tell me that?
I'm happy to, I'm happy to do it, if y'all trust me to do it. All right, all right. So there are three places up. This is a great question, we probably shouldn't have set this out. I think someone misspoke earlier and said place five when they're actually, John's running against me for place four.
Oh, okay.
So Erin and Lori are running against each other for place three.
And I'm only picking one?
Correct. I'm running against John for place four, and Porter and Kim are running each other for place five.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Any other questions? I just wanted to make clear, I fully support working on the bond committee. I mean, they're volunteers, they're doing great work, it's a heavy, heavy lift, and there's a lot of numbers involved. Look at any of these slides, there's a lot of big numbers involved with this bond. So I fully support what they're doing. My issue is that we knew five years ago that we were going to have to be having this conversation now, and we didn't do the work to find out what the community wants. We didn't have town halls, we didn't have forums, we didn't have outreach, we didn't do surveys to find out what people want in a second high school, or if they even want a second high school. And again, I really worry that whatever we come up with has to be what the majority out there wants, and I'm not sure we know what that is. And again, I appreciate what the bond committee is doing. Hopefully, they get good feedback, but I want to make sure that happens.
So the bond advisory committee is a closed committee, there's 70 members. They are encouraged every single meeting, after every single meeting. Your homework is to go out to the community and share what you've learned tonight, and also get feedback on what, how you feel about what you've learned. So you cannot have 10,000 community members on a committee. You just can't, you won't get anything done. This is how every single district does it. They have a bond advisory committee that advises the school board, they make a recommendation to the school board. Again, their homework is to go out and get feedback, and, sorry, educate the public and then get feedback on that.
All right, so I fully support bond committee, too. I think it's great, and they have been, there have been going out into the community and asking for feedback. I would have liked, again, to see something beforehand. I also would have liked to have some transparency on how the bond committee was selected. I happened to know about it because somebody wanted to put me on there, wanted to put me on there, and then they found out I was running, so that didn't happen, and that's okay. But they wanted to put me on there. Otherwise, I would not have known how to even get onto the bonds committee. It was not in a weekly newsletter from the school, it wasn't in our monthly communication. There, I don't know what the criteria was, except for that somebody told me that the principal, you'd have to email your principal, and the principal would recommend you. I just think there should have been a little bit more inclusivity to the community and communication on how that would occur.
Just real briefly, I want to touch on what Porter said. Communication with the community is a two-way street, and I know they're being encouraged to reach out to us, and the community was encouraged to reach out to them, but the school district didn't provide any contact information for any of these people on the bond committee. So if you don't happen to know them, if you're new to the area, or maybe English isn't your first language, how are you supposed to communicate with this board? How are you supposed to communicate your desire? On the city council, what we've done when we want community feedback is we've done a number of things. We've had forums, we have like open forums where people can come talk and learn about a project. We've had surveys that we send out electronically, we've had people standing outside of HEB catching people. There's a lot of ways to get community feedback, and I think we need to get a little more creative with soliciting that in the district.
I just wanted to touch on that I think as far as you soliciting to be on the bond committee, I think those people are, to the best of my knowledge, they are nominated to make sure that it's a complete cross-section of our community so that there's not polarizing. These people need to be able to work together. So they are nominated by board members, by school administration, to make sure that their voices are heard and that we're having a group that can be cohesive, that can work together in that space. That is what I've been told, and everybody I've heard that is in that room has said that it's been a really great experience, that it has been a really true cross-section of our community to the best of their knowledge, and that they've been reaching out for feedback and such. So I just wanted to put that out there as well.
We're talking bond advisory committee, and I just want to say, first and foremost, those 70 people had a very big agenda. They had a very big task ahead of them, and I appreciate every single one of them volunteering their time, volunteering their energy and their efforts and their hearts. Sometimes when you're a board member, you're a city council, when you are volunteering your time, sometimes you're put in a tough position, and they are getting beat up at times when they're just conveying information. I understand that there are so many different ways, and there's always another way that we can be doing things, but this is the way that you do it across every single school district. If you had a bond advisory committee with too many people, as John said, you don't, you're not productive. This group of individuals is a very cross, a cross-group of our community that is speaking on your behalf, and so I thank them very much for their time.
So our third question is this. Lake Travis ISD is experiencing staff shortages across the board. What are your ideas on how to address this problem? Should there be more so-called workforce housing available in the area to allow LT ISD staff to live closer to the district? So can you elaborate on this?
Thank you. It is not a new issue that we're facing right now with staff shortages. This is a nationwide issue. Teachers are leaving the profession in droves right now, and it's not a Lake Travis-specific problem. But it is a problem, and I think Erin said it well earlier tonight, saying, that doesn't mean that we're naive and that we're just going to say, oh, well. It's very important. We had a board meeting, our last board meeting, we passed the most aggressive advancement for our staff to entice our teachers and let them know how important we find them to be and how much they mean to our kids. We have also sent back, that was something that we're doing before, we talked about budgets, and we've sent them back and said, we want you to come back with more. We need to put more money to our teachers. Our teachers are the ones that are, that have our kids every day. Our teachers are the ones that love our kids. Our teachers are not doing this for the money, our teachers are doing this because those kids come back when they're seniors in high school and they want to see their fifth-grade teacher, or they're in their middle school and they go back and see their kindergartner, or those high school kids that get to go read at the elementary school. That's why the teachers are doing this. It's not for the money, but they have had such a terrible time. We have a fast-growth district, and what that means is we have kids coming in in droves, and our teachers have to meet them where they are. That means they come with different academic experiences than what our students have, and we have to meet every single one of them exactly where they are. You couple that with COVID, and our existing students have had learning losses that we are all still trying to understand, and each teacher has to have an individualized plan for each one of those students. Our teachers are really struggling, and so we need to make sure that we're all leaning in, we're all rubbing on our teachers.
Teacher support and retention has become something that I'm almost most passionate about in this, in this race. My mom was a, is a retired public school teacher of 33 years, so I have a big heart for our educators. So this is something that really hits home for me. Nationally, our teachers are overworked, they are underappreciated, and less students than ever are going into education as a field. So the profession in general is shrinking. So that means, what can we do? We have to come alongside our teachers first and foremost in support, let them know that they're not doing it by themselves. We, as parents, we need to be advocates for our children, but we also need to stand alongside our teachers and show them that we're here to help them. So how do we do that? I would propose a community and board task force of sorts or committee to come up with innovative ideas on how we can solve this problem, not just in our area, but across the whole country. We can be a leader. Ideas for that would be public and private partnership for utilizing LTIC property to possibly provide affordable housing for our district. Also, I've already reached out to the Lake Travis Education Foundation to see about possibly having them come in to do tutoring for our kids for free. There's a wealth of money, but also time and help on the LTEF, and I know that they have said there's a possibility of rewriting some grants already to come alongside us for tutoring, which would alleviate some pressure from these teachers who are trying to close all these gaps and do everything at one time. So we have so many creative, bright minds in our community. I feel like we're like a treasure trove of knowledge and experience, and I'm looking forward, if elected, to tapping into that and coming up with awesome ideas to lead us forward and be an example for the rest of the state.
It's a great question, and it's the one thing that I am most focused on in this race, which is our staffing issues. You know, if you're not a parent in the district, I see a lot of parents in the audience, but if you're not a parent in the district, I'll tell you, I mean, you get the email that your, you know, your bus isn't coming that day, or you get the email that you got a pack of lunch because the high school annex cafeteria's been shut down, and it's all staffing issues, right? And I agree that it's not a LT-specific problem, but we need an LT-specific solution to it. We need to be out in front of this, because every, just because everybody's going through it, doesn't mean that we don't need to solve it faster and smarter than everyone else, because we're competing with everyone else for that talent. So if someone else out there solves it before we do, they're going to get those quality candidates and not us. So we need to take action yesterday on this. So yes, pay is part of it. Kim said, they don't do it for the money, the money helps, right? We have to make sure that we are competitive with not only Central Texas, but the other large cities in Texas, make sure that we are competitive there, but also make sure that we're competitive with private industry, right? Because if we're talking about hiring food service, and someone can go into food service at Arby's and make the same amount of money, well, then that's a difficulty. You asked about workforce housing, that's a big passion of mine. I'm on the, I'm a commissioner on the BKA, my zoning commission as well. It's a big movement to work on affordable housing. I don't care if you call it affordable housing, workforce housing, it's teacher housing, that's what we need, right? It is a shame that a teacher who wants to serve our community can't afford to live in our community. And it's very, very difficult for a teacher on the average salary in our district to live in our district, and we need to change that, because they're driving from Flugerville, they're driving from Buda, and if they have to drive to two other districts to get to ours, and they can get a better job there, they will. So workforce housing has to be at the top, and the district needs to be out there advocating for it. You don't see that happening, you don't see them going to the cities, talking about why workforce housing is needed. That has to be every time a workforce housing project comes up, they need to be there.
So, yes, I think we all know that staffing shortages are not an LT-specific problem here. I think there's a Texas Tribune article that said 66% of Texas teachers are looking to leave the profession. So it is something that we have to solve. It is a top priority to figure out how to do that, and the board did pass a, I believe it was a 2% increase, and to put that into a little bit of context, if you get the highest percentage of that as a teacher, that comes out to $166 a month. Okay. So although it is start, it's not a place that we can stop. We do need to be attracting our teachers here, they need to be able to live, be able to afford to live here, and that is with workforce housing, and we need our district to advocate for that on the municipality level. Houston, I think it was today, is doing a $10,000 retention bonus for teachers, and they already pay above their average teacher salary, already starts ours, above ours, and our average teacher salary is below the state level. So I think there's more things that we need to do to bring us up to being a destination district, not just for our students, not just for our families, but for our educators as well.
So I wish I had more payroll data to me, but it's more than 2%. I kind of agree with Kit. We should take action yesterday, but we took action last month. We did a one-time bump in the fall, one-time bump for every teacher, and then we did another one that's going to take place in May, but we increased their pay last month. 2% or was it 3%? If Porter says it was 2%, I trust that that's correct. But what she's leading out is that next month, they're bringing to the board another pay increase of at least 3%, maybe even 4% if we can afford it. So we talked about 3% again in the budget workshop. One of the board members brought up, why not 4%? So the CFO had, you know, the, here in the headlights, let's talk about it next month, let her calculate whether or not we can afford it, because this is in perpetuity. This isn't a one-time bump. This is raising the payroll of our district by 4%. We need to make sure that we can afford that in the future, because we're going to have a couple of new campuses, some sort of relief for the high school, there's a lot to think about when you just arbitrarily say, oh, let's just give them, each teacher $10,000, which is only on certain teachers, by the way, in Houston. So you can't afford to give every single teacher $10,000. I would like to do it every day. I mean, my grandmother was a teacher, I, I love teachers. So if we could give them more, we would. It's just, our legislature, 10 seconds to talk about my legislature, our legislature needs to give every district in the state of Texas more money so that we can pay our teachers more. It doesn't start here. 84% of our payroll, I'm sorry, 84% of our budget is payroll.
So we're talking about teacher retention, and how do we keep them from leaving the district? Because we are hearing a lot have left, a lot more are about to leave, and we have had so much turnover at every level. We had six out of 11 principal vacancies in the last year or so. That's a large number, that's unusual. So why don't we ask the teachers? That's what I've been doing for the last few weeks. And the school district actually did ask the teachers. There was a survey at the high school in October of 2021, asking them what was their number-one source of stress, and their answer across the board was workload. They have too much to do and not enough time to do it. I talked to an English teacher at the high school who has 175 students, and she spends eight minutes grading each essay. Do the math, that's 23 hours, on top of teaching for 40 hours a week. So that is the first thing we can do to retain teachers, is give them a man- So that is the first thing we can do to retain teachers is give them a manageable workload. At the elementary level, that looks like bringing back monitors at recess time, bringing back a symphony so they have planning time during the day. There are lots of things that we can do that won't cost us a thing that would make their lives better and make them want to stay in the district. But we heard, the second thing from teachers, they said their second source of stress was finances. And we heard tonight that the district just gave them the most aggressive raise in the history of Lake Travis, and it was 2%. That's not even a cost of living raise. That is not cutting. Well, before I run out of time, I want to talk about workforce housing because I've been very vocal about this on Lakeway City Council, and it's something that we need. This is a new problem for Lake Travis that's developed just in the last two or three years because we have all seen, everybody that's a homeowner, you've watched your home mortgage rates skyrocket, you've watched your home value skyrocket. And if you want to move to this area, if you're a new graduate and you want to teach for the first time, or if you're somebody who has that kind of salary, teacher salary, it's impossible for them to work here right now, to find a place to live. And when gas is $4 a gallon, we need to do better. And we need the school district to be a partner. When I was listening to these projects on city council, I did not hear from the district. I heard from the chamber, but not the district. That has to change.
So now, we now have an opportunity for a one-minute response from anyone who would like to offer further comment.
Thank you again. 2% is being thrown around the room. There was a 1% in the fall. There's 2% last month. There's another 1% in May. Then we're going to set a new rate for the fall, and we're going to increase that by at least 3%, possibly 4. So if you do the math, that's 8, that's 8%. When I say it's the most aggressive one in recent history, it's the most aggressive payroll that we've talked about in recent history. So teachers talk about workload, absolutely. Are teachers overworked? Absolutely. But the number one thing on almost every study is appreciation. They're, they're not, they're getting so hammered by parents and Ward and guys like me, you know, you know, God, we just need a little more, a little more, right? It's appreciation is why they're, they have left en masse during COVID.
Is there someone else like to respond? I'm going to try. So I, I actually agree with John on this. Uh, it is, it is a teacher support issue as well, right? There is a sentiment, again, I've spent a long time during this campaign talking to teachers, talking about how they feel, talking about whether they feel like the administration has their back. And the answer is generally no. They don't feel like they're getting backed up when push comes to shove on things. And, and it really is an atmosphere that we're not in partnership with our teachers anymore. It's an adversarial relationship that has developed in our community. Why are you teaching this to my kid? Why are you not teaching this? Why is my child feeling this? And we really have to get back to working in partnership with teachers, and that is going to change the environment and change the mood and keep them in the district. I did also want to mention recapture real quick. I agree it's a state issue. We need to be active at the state, uh, lobbying and advocating for a change to recapture because they do not send us enough back from what our recapture payment is. That is a state issue. We are not active nearly enough at the state level on that issue.
First I want to talk, um, we are very active at the state level, and the district comes together with other districts. If you go in as one voice, we all know one voice really isn't heard. You come in, you come, you come together with other districts, and that's what we have done. We have done that well before the nine years I was on the board, and we do that all the time. It is very important to us. We talk to and listen to our teachers, we listen to our staff, and we understand what is important, and we try to take that back so that we can get money. Every single year, because we're a basketball district, they continue to take funds from us, and they continue to increase the funds that they're taking. It used to be that the state funded school districts. Right now, you all are funding our school districts, and we have a very small percentage that comes from the state. In regards to workforce housing, I'll say it quick. In regards workforce housing, I will say that the district has been party to that, but that is not the district's job is to, to build. We are to partner with them, but it's not our job. I sat with Mayor Lakeway City, uh, Lakeway, uh, City Council, I sat with Mayor, and I also know that our district is doing that with me.
So the fourth question. In terms of curriculum, is the district teaching the right subjects and properly preparing students for college or career, or do you think there should be changes? So, in what areas?
Well, I have a college student who I think is doing great in college, but I'm not going to judge this by my own personal experience. I'm going to judge it by the collective experience of students because that's how we're supposed to be making decisions, not just what's good for our own family, but what's good and important for all students. And if you look at the rankings and how reviewed on this, US News rankings, grades as some college readiness at 119 out of the state. Great Schools gives us a 6 out of 10 on college readiness, Niche Rakes us 73, and it gives Westlake 9 out of, number 9, we're number 73. So something's wrong. Like, we need to focus on what's wrong if all of these ranking systems are saying we're not doing as well as we could be doing. Should there be changes in the curriculum? Absolutely. I think we should offer an IB program. I don't know why we aren't. A lot of districts do. But I would like to see curriculum changes at earlier levels as well. I would love to see foreign language offered earlier in elementary school. I would love to see more than one language offered at middle school. But I'd also like to see additions to our curriculum for people who aren't college-bound, for people who might go into the culinary industry, for people who might go into other industries that are great professions, but they're not necessarily destined for college. We need to keep all students in mind when we make curriculum choices, but we need to keep trying to do better and better every year and not settle for the way we've always done things.
So our science, technology, the arts, engineering, math programs, STEAM program STEM is one of the best in Texas. This is, this is what makes Lake Travis, Lake Travis. When we prepare our kids for their next step, they're prepared holistically. It's not just the curriculum that's carrying them forward, it's everything that they're involved in, extracurriculars. A high percentage of our kids are in extracurriculars. That's what carries them forward. That's what prepares them. The US News reported, this has been in social media for the last couple of weeks. So when we were tested, I'm sorry, ranked in 2013, we were ranked 627. In 2021, we were ranked 1,200 and something, I have that written down somewhere. In 2013, that was out of 2,700 districts. In 2021, that was 24,000 districts. So we went from the 22nd percentile in 2013 to the fifth percentile in 2021. All of that gaining about 3,000 kids. So is our curriculum good? Absolutely. Are our teachers good? Yes. So don't put a lot into the rankings because someone's cherry picking the information. Look at the whole thing, 2013 to 2021, look at the whole thing. Read the whole thing. Look at the denominator, 2,700 versus 24,000, that tells the story. Fifth percentile, fifth percentile.
So I think, uh, there are some great programs that we have at, uh, middle school and the high school. You know, my, I have a middle schooler who's in engineering right now, and he loves it. And I don't remember that being something that I could take in middle school. And when he takes his engineering to next year, he'll have some high school credit already. So I think that is great, but I think we can do more, like IB, like the dual language starting earlier. Um, and another thing I think we really need to look at is, you know, public education is trying to prepare our children for the future. And as Laurie said, not every child is college-bound. And as a society, and in the US, we have really been pushing college education. And what that has left us is with a tradesman labor trough. And we're going to hit that labor trough in about 2024, if I remember correctly. And we, there are wonderful jobs in the trades. And I don't know right now, my kids are still, I think, pretty young. I don't know where they're going to go. I don't know if they're going to go to college or if they're going to go to trade, but I would love to have the opportunity for them to figure a path out in high school, at least the next step out of high school. And another thing I want to hit on is, um, I think an ROTC program would also be great at our high school. I have, uh, I have one son who is obsessed with going into the military. That might be his path, and I would love to give him some experience in that going up, working, um, active in scouting, that gives him a little bit of experience there. But I think an ROTC program is great. So while we do have some excellent programs, that doesn't mean we should stop. We should be able to look at all of the different areas that we can improve on and making sure that we have all different types of opportunities for different types of students.
I'm going to sound like a broken record here because I say sort of the same things. I'll, I'll tell you about our experience at the high school because it's so big. Until you find your niche, it's very easy to get lost. But once you find that, it's a wonderful experience. We had a wonderful experience, and I think that is the real key, right? And so what we need to do is make sure that every student has those niches that they can find for themselves. So I do think that CT, what I call vocational, but it's, you know, focused on trades, focused on, um, you know, technical education. I think we need to expand that to the greatest degree we can, that there's interest in the students. I mean, we need to be good stewards. These things cost money. So we don't want to offer things that there's no interest in, but I do think we need to take a look at what the students want to take and what we can offer them. I am a big believer in starting foreign language early. We start foreign languages in ninth grade, except for Spanish, we should start in eighth grade. And we, I absolutely think we need to, any, any language teacher will tell you that's too late. So we need to make, we, we need at least take a look at what it would take and what would be involved in going a little earlier on that. The other broad point that I just want to make is no matter what we're teaching in individual classes, again, doesn't matter what the class is, if the teachers aren't there and they don't have time to teach the classes, right? And so again, some other people answered this on other questions, I was planning on getting to it on this one, but I absolutely think we need to sit back and look at what we ask teachers to do. So many teachers have told me, look, I got this job for this, and then you added on this, and then you added on this, and then you added on this, and now I'm asked to do all of those things. And maybe I don't even, not even asked to do the thing I originally signed up for, and God bless them because they, they keep taking it and taking it. But we need to sit back and look at whether we're asking too much of them and whether we can get, take more off.
I think college prep and curriculum is one of the things that really shines at our district. It's one of the things I'm most proud about being a part of. Our students, y'all, because it's a big campus, they have an abundance of choices, of awesome, awesome classes and clubs. When I was in school, there were very few opportunities unless you were doing just the really traditional things, if you're a dancer or an athlete. These kids have an amazing assortment of clubs to choose from so that they can find their group, they can find their niche. We have over 30 advanced placement AP courses offered, and that's not including our dual enrollment stuff. My son is in multiple dual enrollment courses right now, through the UT Onramps program, through ACC dual enrollment. I know multiple children personally who went to college and were able to graduate in three years because of all the credits they earned at Lake Travis. They are preparing these kids for college. These teachers are working their butts off to have these kids prepared for college. A couple of quick stats on that. I talked to the varsity women's basketball coach this week. Our varsity girls team, the entire team cumulative average, 102.8 on the 100-point scale. All the seniors were academic all-state on our women's basketball team. The cadet, our cadet's dance line went to nationals in Dallas. Not only did they win the dance part of the competition, they had the highest GPA in the nationals competition. These kids, they are, they're being college-prepared. Yes, I would agree with basically everyone here. I feel like I know there's a trade shortage. I think we could definitely offer more classes in skilled trades. We need electricians and plumbers, and I think if we not only offered them, but provided some pride in those things and built up the value of those courses, I think that would be a big benefit as well. In a college prep town, we need to provide some encouragement and pride for these other types of workforce avenues.
I don't think you heard any one of the six of us up here say that, um, we don't offer a lot of things for our students, nor do I think that you heard that we don't think we need to do more. We all, I, I would say all six of us believe that we need to continue to offer more, and it's all different avenues. We have a robotics team that just was formed a couple of years ago, and now they're all winning accolades left and right. We have teams that's not your traditional, your traditional athletics or this, it's those clubs that are starting. We have lacrosse teams, we have wrestling teams that we've never had before. So we are doing good things, but that doesn't mean that we can't do more. But some of the things that I am personally proud of, um, we had in 2021, we had 33 National Marriage Scholars. That's your finalist, your commended, and your Hispanic. And we thought 33 was great. This year, we have 71. Some of our numbers from last year, because we don't count the kids that graduated yet, but 86% of our graduates in 2021 went to college. So we are preparing our students. Our kids are getting money for those scholarships as well. In 2021, there were over $13 million in scholarships that went to our graduating seniors. We have to be doing something right if they're getting that kind of money. Our kids are also very well-rounded. They're not just academics. Last year, we had over 23,406 hours of volunteer hours that were recorded by our seniors. These are kids that are doing and going and volunteering. We're teaching them to be servants. We're teaching them to have that servant heart. Academics are very and very important, but the community that they live in, that's where they're going to be when they finish school. Our ACT scores, um, we have an average of 25.3 with a state average of 20.2. The SAT average 1175 with a state average of 10.10. We are doing good things here.
So this is an opportunity for any of us to respond for up to a minute.
So I just wanted to briefly respond to the rankings issue. And I, I take your point that we looked at, you know, you want to do a comparison, not only how we've performed in the past and how we're performing currently, but the apples-to-apples comparisons, how are we performing next to current high schools, Ames Downstreet or Leander schools? And if you look at the ranking systems, whichever one you use, and there's a variety of ones with different methodologies, we're being beat by Vandergriff, we're being beat by Westlake, we're being beat by Cedar Park, and some schools in AIAS State. And that's the comparison we need to be looking at when we're deciding where can we do better. And that's the comparison we need to be looking at when we're deciding where can we do better.
Lori, I agree with you completely. We, we cannot be complacent with where we are. We need to make sure that we're always looking forward. When you look and do the comparisons of some of our neighbors, we have Ames who is a landlocked neighborhood or school district. They cannot, they don't have kids coming in, five hundred new kids coming in every year like we expect to have next year. They don't have the demographics that we have. Ames costs quite a bit more. Porter says she couldn't live there. It's a different demographic. We have a different demographic that we have to adhere to, and we have to serve those students. So I agree that we cannot be complacent. We're not complacent, but we definitely need to make sure that when we're comparing, that you're not setting those standards in a different way.
Would anyone else like to? So everyone up there would look very foolish if we said, no, 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 we don't want to offer any new programs. We don't want to do that. But Kit hit the nail on the head. It's all about interest and money. You have to have interest, and then you look at how much is it going to cost and can we afford it? An IB program would be fantastic. My best friend, his two girls went through an IB program, and they are rock stars. It's not for everyone. It really isn't. It's a, it's basically college and high school. So no extracurriculars or anything like that, no time, right? But the interest versus the money, that's the big thing. Porter, did you say your middle schooler is in engineering? Here in Lake Travis?
Yeah.
Okay. I didn't have engineering offered in my middle school. So don't harp on the nitpicking. Look at the overall curriculum of our district and the success of our district. And I think everyone here is very, very proud of it. You wouldn't have moved here. So we have a few questions from the audience, and so I'm going to invite you to respond to these. We keep going in the order we've been going, and then just reverse. And we're asking if you could give a response in a minute. How does that sound? Does that sound good? In a minute, one minute. So here's the first question. So about a second high school, how about a second high school that specializes, such as a performing arts high school? Who's the, who's the first?
Thank you. A performing arts high school or a specialized high school would be amazing. What we have to think about, though, is do we have the student population that will fill that? Whether we talk about fifty-five hundred students or seventy-five hundred students, we have to pull enough of those kiddos out of the existing high school that would be able to populate that, and not just today, but in perpetuity. We may have ways, kids have different interests and different goals as they come up in their careers and their high school careers. And so they, we have to make sure that we're building a campus that is going to be able to continue to be utilized in that way. We've got to make sure that we're being fiscally responsible with the dollars.
I love the idea of a performing arts or a STEM academy. I mentioned that while I was prepping for this. And like Kim, I'm just not sure that our district is, we're in this weird space, right? We grew really quickly. We're big by our own standards, for sure. We're big across a lot of standards. But to support an entire school based on just performing arts, I think we're talking about even bigger districts than our own. If we could do that, I would love it, just like with the IB program. We've talked about that before, but you almost see a whole second small campus or a separate facility to house those kind of programs. And I'm not saying I'm opposed. It's just whether or not our district can support it. Do we have enough kids who would do it? Can we afford it? And if so, I say we consider all options, whatever is the best, that provides the most opportunities for the most kids in our district while being fiscally responsible. I think that's what we should keep trying to do.
So I agree with both Kim and Erin, that we should do what the children and the families are interested in, and we should have these schools if there are enough interest in children to fill it. Problem is, we don't know the answer to that because we haven't asked the question. We knew this was coming at least five years ago. We've done no community surveys, no community town halls to find out if there's enough interest in a performing arts school. Now, I think the logistics of that is very difficult because of where we need to be located, and you'd have people commuting from Hudson Bend to Spicewood to go to a school. Those are, those are difficult questions that we would have to answer. But we, yes, we absolutely need to know if there's support for it. We just don't because we haven't done it.
So I'm not sure there's a lot of different answers here. I think it is a great idea as well, that I do think from a, just a geographic area that we cover, having a specialized campus, even a ninth-grade center, is really putting a lot of strain on our transportation and our families there. And I don't think it really makes sense, whether it's a specialized fine arts facility, ninth-grade center, or something else. I really do, in my opinion, think that a full-on second high school makes the most sense because of how large geographically our district is and already the traffic problems that we have. So I don't really think there's a lot to add. I think we kind of all have a similar opinion there, but maybe I'm wrong.
So we did do a study, and based on the seventy-five hundred kids that we were expecting, that study showed that a performing arts or STEM academy would pull about eight hundred kids, and it just wasn't enough. We need a lot more relief than eight hundred kids. So given the fact that we're a hundred and twelve square mile district and getting to and from that school, you guys are exactly right. It would prove to be very, very difficult, but for eight hundred kids, it's just, it's just not feasible. We need something much, much grander.
So I agree that it's not practical to build a specialized high school for the second high school, because as I said, we need to have significant numbers of students attending it to make a difference. You're not going to get two thousand students in a STEM academy or a fine arts academy. But we also need to take into account just practical things like traffic and geography. You can't ask someone from Hudson Bend to drive all the way to Rogers Peacock, and that's going to create even worse traffic than we already have on seventy-one and six-twenty. So we have to take all those things into account. We also don't want to limit students. I have students, my students were both athletes and art students. They were academic students as well. We need to give students more options, not less. I think if we wanted to do a fine arts academy, we could consider options like a school within a school. The number one high school in Texas consistently is Losa Academy. That started as a school within a school. It's not anymore. It's a free standing school now. But those are things we could talk about doing, fine arts academies or STEM academies within the existing high school structure.
So I'm just going to stand over here and ask this question because I'm coming right back to you. So this question is, are you opposed to the government making the COVID vaccine a condition for going to school? Are you opposed to the government making the COVID vaccine a condition for going to school?
So my first response is that's not something the school board would ever vote on. We will never have any say in what vaccines are required for school. That's something that's decided at the state level. So I can weigh in on that no more than I can weigh in on you have to have a measles vaccine before you come to school. That's not our purview. But I will defer to scientists and to medical experts. I'm an attorney that works with medical malpractice victims, and I talk to experts from every specialty every week. And we have to trust scientists, we have to trust studies, and we have to let people that we elect who are going to defer to those people make those decisions. We don't have the power to make those decisions. So whether I agree or disagree, I couldn't do a thing about it. So that's my answer to that question.
Would you mind reading the question? Are you opposed? So someone mentioned the other day, or the other day, oh gosh, it was the other day. Someone mentioned earlier about being proactive at the Capitol, at the state Capitol. This is how we can be proactive. We can go to the state Capitol, and we can tell them that it is not okay to mandate the COVID vaccine for our students. I was vaccinated. Didn't work. I've never had measles. I've never had diphtheria. I've never had the mumps. All of those things worked. If they have a COVID vaccine that works and doesn't kill anyone, then yeah, maybe maybe. But, but right now, it doesn't work and it's way too dangerous. So I would lobby downtown against it.
So as Lori said, it's not a decision we can make, but let's say, I think lobbying for whatever we want is great down at the state level. Let's say that it is mandated at the state level. We already have vaccines that are mandated for our students and for those students or those families that choose not to take those vaccines for their children, they have ways to submit paperwork and go around those. And so I think that if that were to happen, we would have the same process that we do for any other vaccine that is mandated by the school.
So I think this is where it gets back to one of the things that I think is important with this race, which is let's focus on the issues that we have. Does anybody think that the state of Texas is going to mandate COVID vaccine? So I'm also going to the Capitol and advocating for what we want. But this, the fight about whether it works or whether it doesn't, we have choice. You vaccinate yourself if you want to vaccinate yourself. Let's not argue about whether the vaccine works or whether it doesn't. Let's focus on the overcrowding and the understocking.
We got right in it, huh? Here's my stance on this, guys. First of all, I agree with everyone here. That's not something we're going to be deciding. Second of all, if it was, I would say that's a parent's choice because like my husband and I are vaccinated, our older two kids, we decided to vaccinate. The vaccination was new. Our kids, our younger kids are small, prepubescent. We decided not to vaccinate them. I appreciate having that choice. I think that's a choice we would continue to have. To kids' point quickly, I know I'm only on the minute. I agree there are issues that are LT-specific that we need to talk about right now, but I don't think we can forget that part of the reasons that we're dealing with some of these learning loss issues and such, and they would have been considerably worse had we not had board members who stood up for us as far as parents with unmasking and those kinds of things.
Well, we definitely jumped right in. So I agree with everything that's been said. That is not a decision of the board. Erin and Porter both said it right, that parents have a choice. Parents have a choice for any kind of vaccine that we have right now. The COVID vaccine has been around for a very short amount of time. The other vaccines that our students are required by the state to take have gone through many years of studies, and yes, the scientists are telling us that, that it was a, they're going through very long studies. I'm not a scientist, and so I'm not going to speak to what that is, but I will say that it's important to me that we have those choices, that it's important to me that we also follow the law, too. And so we will, as a board, because that's what we're destined to do, is to follow the law, and that's what we did when we sat on the board before, we followed the law. And so I want our parents to continue to have your choices, and I want our kids to continue being in those classrooms so that they can get the education they deserve.
You know, aren't we fortunate to have these six people who are acting on this? All of you are working to make this community a better place, and we are mighty grateful. So what we want to do is we want to offer, give you a minute, two minutes, a minute-ish?
A minute and a half.
A minute and a half. Just to offer a closing word, and I think we'll go with the order we've been following.
I just want to say thank you again. Thank you for all of you attending. It is so wonderful to be back together again. It is so wonderful to see you in person, and the online version, we all know, did work. And so we are, I'm very blessed and thankful to be here in person with you all. I am thankful for our community that is very concerned and wants to be a part of the decisions that are made for our district. It's important that we all partner together, and I think we've all said it in some way, shape, or fashion, we want to partner with our community, we want to partner with our teachers, we want to partner with our students. And so I am honored to have been able to serve on the board for the past nine years, and I would be very grateful to have your vote on May seventh and allow me to serve for another three years.
All right, we're almost done. I just want to say that if elected, I really am just a calm, non-polarizing parent who cares deeply for our district, for our community. I care very much about us lowering the political temperature and the political climate and just focusing really on academics. I also want to finish by saying that there has been a ton of negativity on social media, not just amongst supporters of candidates and such, but also about our district. And it saddens me if we only focus on the negative to be elected. That's just disheartening. There are things to do. I am not naive. I understand there is work to be done. We want to always be striving to be better, but let's not forget that in most of the rankings, whether declining or not, we're still in all the ones I've seen, top ten percent, y'all, in our state, usually in our country, sometimes top five percent. So should we be striving for greatness and for better, higher excellence? Of course, and I certainly would do that if elected. But let's also remember that we are in a great, great district and a great place to live, and I am thankful for that.
I want to echo, thank you all for coming. Thanks for having us. And I want to say thank you to John and Kim as well for their help service. It's not an easy job. People are mad at you a lot, and the pay isn't good, right? There's no pay. So for anybody to do it for the length of time that the two of them have done, I think they deserve our appreciation. That doesn't mean that we can't do better. I'm sorry, but you know, at the end of the day, when I look at what we're doing, I'll say it this way. If you think that things are going great, nothing needs to change, fine. But if you want change, if you want things to be done differently, if you want the board to be run differently, if you don't feel like you have a voice, if you don't feel like you're heard by the board, I would, I would really appreciate your vote. I tell parties who come before me as a judge all the time that you may not agree with my decision, but I can guarantee you that you will be heard, because that's what you deserve from your government. And I want to be accessible. I want you to be heard, because again, I think that, I agree with Erin, we need to take the temperature down. The way you do that is show everybody that they have a voice and that you are responsive. And again, I may not agree with every decision I make, but I can guarantee you that I will give you the opportunity to be heard before I make that decision. I would appreciate your vote. KIT4LT.com. Thank you very much.
So thank you, everybody, for coming. Thank you to the chamber and to Paul, and I definitely want to echo, I know Kim and John have spent, I don't even want to add up the hours. I'm sure you couldn't even add up the hours at this point, and the work that they've done for our district. Like I've said before, my kids are in middle school. I still have quite a ways. I still have quite a ways to go in this district, and I think it's time for a change. And that is, you know, a reason why I'm running, is we have had some, kind of a stagnant board for a long time. And we have some new challenges ahead of us. We have a changing landscape within our district, within society, with teachers and what's going on with the shortages there. And I'm ready to come in with some fresh energy and some fresh perspective to tackle these and to make our district even better than we already are.
I'm glad we had this time. Board, thank you. Father Paul, thank you very much. So it's no secret, right? I love this district. So it cuts me when someone says it's stagnant, it's time for a change. It really cuts deep. Kit, you said something that we don't listen to you as the community. We have a meeting every single month, a school board meeting, and everyone in here can speak at that school board meeting. I haven't heard you once, I'm sorry. Sorry. I haven't heard you one time speak at a school board meeting on any topic. So if you want to email leadership, you can do that. If you don't want to speak at the school board meetings. But come to the school board meetings. We encourage that. We want that. We want you to speak. We want to hear you. We have full-time jobs. I have four kids and a really great wife. So we're busy. We get paid way too much to listen to y'all. So, Kit, come to the school board meetings. Say what's on your mind. If you have an issue, tell us. That's how we affect change. That's how we keep moving in the right direction. And again, vote for John.
I want to just echo everyone's thanks for getting this put together and all of you for coming out tonight to listen to us talk. I know everybody up here cares about this district and cares about doing the best we can to serve you all. I have had the privilege of serving Lakeway for the last four years, and we have had our share of controversies and emotional issues. And I've served with people of every stripe politically on council, and we have found a way to reach a consensus on nearly every single issue. We found a way to help guide people through some of the most stormy, emotional times. And that's what I can bring to this board. I can bring somebody who has familiarity with writing policies because we need more policies on very basic things in the district that we're lacking right now. And we need to back away from wedge politics and focus on real problems. It doesn't mean we don't love the district. I love the district, and I'm here serving it to try to make it better. But we can't just turn a blind eye to things that we need to improve on. And that's not what leadership is. Leadership is not telling everybody everything's fine when your eyes tell you differently. When my kid has had four different pre-cal teachers in one year, when I get emails that there's no cafeteria open, when I get emails that there's no bus service, when I hear that there's six out of eleven principals that are gone, these are real problems. We need to address them.
I'm going to echo what Father Paul said. Six great candidates, and your heart is in the right place. And I thank you all for running and serving to make the district as good, the great district that it is. How about a give it up for Father Paul? I also want to thank Kristi Jones, our board chair, our co-chair on the board. Kristi Black, our past board chair. Jeff Bailey was here. Kit Martiz with camera. Thank you, Kim. And thank you.